Work session for Monday, August 18th to the order. Let's call it roll.
I'm from Governor Sheldon, Brackman, here, Eddin, Reynolds.
President.
Baltner.
Here.
Von Figlio.
Here.
De Bursa.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
President Dolezal.
Here, all by myself.
He gets some.
At this time, we'll give the opportunity for the public to speak, so if you would like to address the council, just give your name and address, and please let me show you the marks to five minutes. Anyone who'd like to address?
I'm here tonight to kind of, I've already talked about this to the public safety resolution. It's not that I'm unfavorably approaching this, it's just that I want people to understand that the area that we're talking about, I had the responsibility when I was DOD to develop the floodplain maps. 1978. The floodplain maps are still existent, they should reside in the city clerk's office for allocation. The floodplain maps were a requirement for communities across the country to develop adherents based on FEMA's requirements. That area, and I've got no problem with changing zoning, but it does trigger something. Adherence to the floodplain. That area, to my knowledge, that we're talking about, especially closer to what you would say would be green area, or some of the green area, is in the floodplain. Now, this is not my determination, it's right in your code chart. It's right, spelled right out, in terms of what you have to do and how you have to perform with it. And there are succinct qualities that require adherence to it. Otherwise, you're subject to litigation, both Article 78 and problems associated with development ability. So, I don't know unless the floodplain maps have been amended. If they've been amended, then they should be attached as an overlay to that project. And if they meet those requirements, that's fine, I'm not, I'm just, it's not available to me, and I don't know what has been accomplished since I left that long time ago. But I do know that area at that point in time was, and we did as much as we did sediment evaluation to deal with what's under the ground, such as Carlisle and Muck, which is basically a subsurface that creates all kinds of sedimentation and subsidence. So the requirements that may or may not be in place have to be adhered to regarding floodplains. Now, if that area, or none of it, and the buildings that were there prior were grandfathered in, you still have to make sure that the adherence to the floodplain requirements are directed. So, I'm just here for information purposes to city council to ask that question. How's the review? Because when you do change the zoning orders, it triggers that kind of adherence. So, maybe directly the developer wants to respond and say-
I would love to.
-everything is fine, there's no problem, and say, thanks for bringing it up.
Thanks for reminding me how to do my job again, Doug.
Okay, the only comment I have is that, and I'm all for infill, but I want to make sure that infill, when it's accomplished, it adheres to the zoning ordinance. Other words, not having, not having multiple houses infilled in our own zones.
Okay, I'll take the first one. So FEMA floodplain maps have been updated a couple of times, probably since you were in the DOD. They currently are an online version. In fact, as Mark can attest, we just had a training with FEMA a few weeks back, teaching us how to use the new system that will go live, I think, very soon. It is available online now, you can access it. It's not, I'm sure there's something I can screenshot, but we, looking at the floodplain and making sure that any development, any project, anywhere adheres to floodplain requirements is part of our job. It's what our building and zoning inspector does. He is the floodplain manager for the city, there's actually a designation. So, any project that we do always is reviewed for floodplain adherence. I'll also point out that it's in a wetland area primarily, there's a, a large portion of that area is considered wetland area, so that will get looked at if there's any new development or any change in use of a building that, you know, maybe it was a car repair shop and someone wants to put, no, a gym in it. That all gets looked at, so it will all go for, if zoning is required, you know, still a variance even beyond this, that will happen. Everything will go to planning commission for review. So, none of the usual approvals and processes will, they'll still happen. It's, it's what we do. So, I don't know if I respond to that adequately enough.
I'll just bring this up because I composed those maps way back in 1978.
Those maps are dictated by FEMA. FEMA develops those maps.
Well, we can't do it because FEMA wanted, when you talk about flood insurance and the firm application of flood insurance, you had to have a map to designate-
Yeah.
...what that was.
We do.
So, if, oh, I'm not saying you haven't done anything wrong, I'm just, I just wanted to be sure that when you trigger a zoning change, there are certain qualifications that have to be adhered to. Such things as whether or not floodplain is about. We're talking about a hundred-year storm, which is, has a 1% chance occurring in the next 100 years. That's how you calculate when you develop your floodplain. So if something could happen long after we're gone, it's because we didn't properly identify what that floodplain is, so that no building, or partial building, or type of construction would be adhering to a floodproofing application. That's all I'm saying.
Awesome. I can promise you that we will be using FEMA's floodplain mapping tool to identify the appropriate floodplain for every single project.
And that will be through the LWRP too, you have that?
Absolutely. I think that that is mentioned, but there, it is in an LWRP, Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. We have a designated area. That entire area falls within the LWRP. Actually, you can see it on, on the maps that I handed out, so that it is delineated, exactly where that LWRP falls. And as it is designated and adopted by the city, by the city council, we will review every project and, as well as the zoning change, for LWRP consistency.
So in your, in your negative declaration on the environmental quality review, which is indicated in that resolution, you feel that that properly was addressed?
Absolutely. To address the second part of your comment, or question, as it were, sorry, remind me of what it was, I know it pertained to, oh, R1 districts. So, this is a crude, and I will admittedly say this is a crude map with the blue rectangles showing where the districts are for the proposed, what do we call it, pilot program for the infill development. As you can see, they all fall primarily within R2 districts. There may be a little bit of, you know, some C1 overlap, and this map will get redrawn, so it, the rectangles are a little less crude. My apologies, this is the software that I have to work with, but. So, the intent of this is to, all of the work that we've done, we talked about this in Housing Committee, all of the work that we've done over the past couple of years, working with the land bank, working with the BPU and some of our other partners to acquire some properties, do some strategic interventions in neighborhoods that need them. I see Paul is here on Fulton Street, you know, Fulton Street is one of those target neighborhoods. Cross street, you know, they're, they're on your map, right? We've talked about them for a couple of years. We went through the auction process to acquire those parcels, again strategically with thought and intention. We've been able to do that. We now have several of them already lined up and funded for their demolitions as needed, and we have applied for some funding for site development and infrastructure, new infrastructure, water, sewer, the works. So, we're talking about neighborhood, complete neighborhood revitalization projects, and infill will be the final piece to that, and that will come in. And this zoning change, or this pilot program, will allow us to do that in a streamlined way. And as we are in the process of updating our zoning code, that could take a couple of years. I think we are at a place now where we are ready to go. We've done a lot of labor, and, you know, our existing zoning is antiquated, and it restricts us a great deal. And so, we want to be able to move a little bit quicker, and again, with intention. Every single project will still go through planning commission review and get a site plan approval. We're not bypassing the complete oversight of any of these, that is not the intent. This just will allow us to have a little more flexibility, to work within the constraints that we have, and try to move these infill housing projects that we all have agreed that we need forward in a little bit more streamlined way.
But you would say that the objection of, of having to put in an infill project or a house in some case, built by an absentee landlord, would not be the best interest to have that occupied with multiple units?
We have no interest in building housing that is going to be built by absentee landlords in the first place. We have been very intentional in the developers that we are currently working with and that we will continue to work with. We are not going to apply for funding and then work with a developer that is not going to be present and not active partners. We're trying, we're doing everything we can to address the absentee landlord problem that we have. So, no, we would not be doing that, Doug.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Sue, did you want to?
Poll to Gulf Holden Street. You folks know from past that I come here and I talk about things, that I see and there's that experience, so, but I talk a little bit about my neighborhood, but abstract. I've seen neighbors cut each other's lawns, I've seen neighbors shovel each other's sidewalks, we get each other's garbage cans, you know, somebody goes to work early and BPU comes by after they leave. You know, we cut each other, I think I said we cut each other's grass, we look out for each other's kids. You know, if we hear somebody's having hard times and their kids are hungry, we go and we feed them out of our cupboards, we don't tell them to go to the food bank, we do the neighborly thing. And for Mr. Russell to go to the newspaper and say to them that we just don't know how to be good neighbors because 126 calls come to the neighborhood in a five-month period, that he probably didn't mention 80% of either originate or concern one specific address, and those calls didn't start until that specific address was occupied, by that specific family. So for us to be called or accused of not knowing how to be good neighbors, that bothers me, because I've seen him, because I've thought of him, and I've never seen him in our neighborhoods. So how would he know?
I've worked your neighborhoods for 23 years.
You're not there now. Two other members have come to my front door.
I talked to your neighbor an hour ago on the phone. An hour ago, I just talked to your neighbor.
Yes, you talked to my neighbor on the phone. You don't come there, and you don't tell the truth. We have good neighbors in that neighborhood. All these problems started with one family. And out of those 80-some calls that police responded to with that address, how many resulted in arrests? None other than people who were there incidentally violating orders of protection and one Republican decency.
That's incorrect.
Is it incorrect?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is just what I've seen, like I said. It's not, I'm not, this is just what I've seen.
You have to remember to get released.
I understand, and that's not the issue. That's not the issue. What I'm here today for is for somebody telling complete lies about our neighborhood. We know how to be good neighbors. And I don't appreciate in a public forum, not only here, to being called ignorant by you for bringing these issues up, but then in another public forum, you tell lies about us? That's not nice.
We obviously-
You're a public representative.
We obviously disagree anything with Mr. Russell. As simple as that.
Okay. That's, that's fair enough.
Love thy neighbor. Love thy neighbor.
We try. Didn't you hear the examples of good neighbors?
Even when they're in perfect, love thy neighbor.
Didn't you hear the examples of good neighbors in our neighborhood? You know, the things that I've seen, the things that you don't see? I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your response, and I agree, we can disagree. If you don't see that neighborhood, please don't tell lies about the neighborhood as a whole. Mr. Dolezal, before the meeting, I had to address to you, thank you, sir. Park's apartment came down, I think it was, cleared that brush, sidewalk looks great, we can see all the way down, we can see the convention houses when folks go when you aren't supposed to be there. Appreciate that. I think I'm done for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address? Same done? We will move on. We do have a presentation tonight. We have members from the BPU here, they have some information they would like to share. Dave's here along with Ellen and Becky, and, what's that? Oh, Chris is over there.
Sir, I think someone else wanted to speak.
Did you want to?
I would, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure, I apologize, I didn't know that was good, I thought you meant to speak. My name is Pat Sirov. I live at Five Westwood Drive in Jamestown, New York. I'm a city resident and then for 57 years. I own a small nonprofit company. I'm a retired school teacher. I own a small nonprofit, non-for-profit company. It's called Collaborative Children's Source, located here in Jamestown, New York. If you know me or know my family, my dad has been passed for many years. I'm a registered Democrat. I have been since 1986, because that's what my dad told me I was going to be in 1986. If anybody has a dad in town, you'd be able to tell you I did that. I apologize for my attire, but I had a meeting tonight from a Republican part, a reelection party. I'm on the committee. I don't look at politics. I don't look at Republican, I don't look at Democrat. Maybe that's silly, I look at people. The crux of this company since 2000, 2020 I should say, has been we give children opportunities. I'm very fortunate that we hold a contract with City Jameson. It's a $60,000 contract this year to fund Turner River Green, the Memorial Bakerang, this year, Christmas in July at the stadium, the dust mackerel that was a week ago, the Labor Day Festival, which will be next week, and the Christmas parade. I have receipts for everything I've done. There seems to be a misunderstanding in this town that I'm here to clear up tonight. And I'm going to have my accountant and my attorneys present the numbers later this week, that I've given something in this city, I'm put on the payroll or something. Let me explain something to you, I just lost $16,000 in the dust mackerel last week. It was budgeted for 10. I just went to the bank today to take $6,000 out of my savings account to pay, to make sure all those vendors got their money. I will make the numbers public by the end of the week, but there's some misunderstanding in this town about what I've given. In fact, Chief, today, I have to apologize, I'm not calling you out, I just paid a bill today for security, because I feel that children and families, when they go somewhere, it's worth the much paid bill for security. The same thing I did to JCC, the $4,800 check I wrote for the use of their parking lot and their staff. I can back it up with every receipt. I will lose money this year. It will come out of my pocket. That's my business. I do what I do for this city because I love this city. I will not be sit back and get things thrown at me from the cheap seats, I'm sorry. You got a problem, call me. Let's talk about it. But I can show you every receipt, every loss, and every event. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to say something real quick. I, I discussed two things with Mr. Smallville three, four months ago, and I was very satisfied at what he does and how he does it, and I have no problem with you, Ken. I think you did a good job, that's my opinion.
I wish everybody felt like that, Mr. Smallville.
But I, but I, I know I talked to you, I had the phone about some things, and I was satisfied with every answer.
Thank you, sir. And I will stand aside with you, that's why we shook hands, ladies and gentlemen, and we left. Thank you.
I'm not really sure what-
I, I don't-
The purpose of you coming here-
We're in a, we're in a public meeting.
What's that?
We're in a public meeting to handle city business.
I guess I'm just curious as to why you would bring that up to a public meeting, does it have, does it have to do with anybody in the room?
Not here to discuss that right now in a public meeting.
I, for the record, I just want to say that we have supported-
You absolutely have.
Every single thing you've done.
The President has to be there.
So I'm, I'm just curious or concerned that when someone comes to a public meeting, if they have a specific question or concern about the way something was handled, that's something, but I don't really understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now you're ready, BPU.
Yeah, hello everybody, thank you. Just a regular update for Public Facilities. One of the main items tonight is an update on the Jamestown Community Fiber Project. So we have Chris Selstrom, Deputy General Manager of Electric, Ellen Patanto, Business Development Coordinator, Becky Adams, Communications Coordinator, and we'll be doing it with an overview. Then I've just got a few other items, and then if you have anything for me, I'll try to respond to that, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, good evening. Just wanted to give a quick update on the community fiber project. Still up there? So the slide deck and, we hand out the same as the slide, it's going to lay out here. So hard to see on the screen, but in your books, the first page is the map. The map shows different distribution areas. Essentially what these are is where the, we call them substations or distribution areas, but each one of these areas will be kind of online in succession, so the first area we're going to talk about tonight is the English area, it's kind of the bottom, it's kind of orange colored, and kind of rotating kind of clockwise with Allen and Newton, and you can see so on, they're all labeled, but this, this map will align with the BPU's electric service area, so anyone that's in the Jamestown BPU electric service area will be covered by this map, even though it's cut off on kind of the side. It does go all the way up to Southwest Drive. So just quick construction update, we've set 321 poles so far, the English, Allen, Newton areas are complete for make-ready. Make-ready as a reminder is putting new poles in the ground, moving up and down the existing infrastructure to make room for the horizontal run of the fiber needs to run down the street. So that's work that the BPU's team is doing. The line workers have been out working quite a bit this spring and this summer, 15, 60-plus hours a week trying to get all this infrastructure ready for the fiber projects. The Newman area is about 70% complete on the make-ready, and the back hall, which is the interconnection of all these distribution areas to the central office equipment, is about 70%. So we're just going to go, we'll scroll along the paper, so construction update, the page we're on. The next column is the fiber install, so this is actually installing the fiber optic cable, running down the street with mainline fiber. Allen, Newton, actually all the fibers between the pump, there's some of those side streets that still go, but the most part's done. The Huxley area has begun, mostly on the south side of the primary state road there. And then underground in the English area will be starting in September, that's residential neighborhoods that have the underground, the poles and the areas, so the fiber will go underground there. And we're working on the permitting for the state roads, there are a lot of state roads that the private folks live and want permitting, so we're working for that. Once you have the fiber run, you have all the mainline fiber, you need to splice it. So splicing is you take the little fibers, break them up, and you break them into, into splitters, and that's how you distribute the houses. So that's a whole other effort that comes in after the fiber crew, they go up the pole and they hang the splitter boxes, and they do all the splicing. English is about 40% complete, and we're expecting electronics for that substation this week. So a hundred first station to get lit, it needs to have the fiber up, it needs to be spliced through, it needs connection to the substation, and then it needs connection to the back hall to the central office. So we're getting, moving along quite well, I'm very happy with our progress. The next page is the installed poles, just a quick map to show you the work that we've done so far on installing poles. We have quite a few more poles to go, we're probably 40, 50% of the way through the make-ready, so this map will assume we need to get bigger over the next six months. Moving on to the following page, just a quick update on all contractual agreements, we're almost through every hurdle on the contractual side. We've accomplished the make-ready work, is what we're doing right now. Full attachment agreements are actually attached to the assets. The Grand Distribution Agreement is a very large state document of the entire state development, Quanta Entry Point, that is still ongoing, and likely will be a lot longer, but generally the terms and conditions are there. The Ownership Transfer Agreement is the agreement between us and Entry Point to take ownership of the assets. Entry Point is the primary grantee on the award, so when they get through certain phases of completion, the BPU will take ownership of those assets and start administering the Internet Service Provider Tariff, so this is an open access network that enables multiple Internet providers to work on that infrastructure, so it's one infrastructure certified by many providers. Internet is the primary thing that we're going to start with on the system, but it will be capable of doing more than this Internet. The tariff that will enable those Internet service providers to participate fairly and freely on, on this kind of market, we're working on finalizing the final details of that. Customer legal agreements for access to properties, so we're going to install various pieces of infrastructure for the customers, those are all set. The middle mile contracts, did the date of two games out, House of Games out, that is completed, so we're excited about that. And then the last one is the marketing. So we're, we're moving right along through the contract phase, excited to keep going on.
Where'd you come from? Middle Mile?
The Middle Mile, ours probably comes from Buffalo, it's the most likely place, but you can have multiple directions and multiple interactions. But generally, you're trying to get back to a, a central liquid hub, bigger market. Following up on the next page, kind of shows our current priorities. The BPU's priorities are going to continue the make-ready work, complete the back hall interconnection between the different substations, so you can see our fiber trailer out there, pulling down the fiber, do a little trailer, and sit inside the road for a few days as they splice through. We need to finalize the ISP tariffs and the ISP agreements and the rates, and then we're going to kick off the marketing efforts pretty soon here in September. Entry Points, they're focused right now on the essential electronics, so putting on the fiber optic gear in the substations and in the central office, and they're working on the, they actually executed the work order today, so this is already up there, but they executed the work order for the drop installs. That's from the pole to the customer house. And then Plus Calcom, who is our mainline fiber installer, they're working on installing fiber Huxley, splicing in the English area, and finalizing some terms, as well as designing the downtown. The downtown's a little tricky because it's all underground, so it takes a quite a bit more planning to get that ready to go. Next page is just a quick kind of expectation of what, what you can expect with our fiber network at this point. Generally, it's open access, and what that means is anyone can come and compete in the business that wants to provide Internet service, they want to provide other digital services. Once we have, once we're through this grant period, once we have everything established, we'll be able to add to additional Internet service providers, digital service providers, which should enable competition as well as economic innovation, hopefully bring a lot more to customer choice, because it's open access, and the Internet is being delivered on our central infrastructure. If a customer wants to change Internet service providers, it's literally a button, and it will take an upgrade, downgrade, change providers, it all happens synchronically, they don't have to get another installer out of the house, they don't have to change anything, it's all the same shared fiber. Very high performance, you know, high speeds is more than double any available high-speed Internet here today. At least for residential purposes. Fair pricing, you know, our goal is, not all of our utilities is low-cost, detailed, right? We want to be reliable, and we want to have low-cost utilities that are stable and predictable, so that's a key, key piece for us. So that's a key, key piece for us. Universal service, everyone that wants internet can get it, the drops will be free to get, they don't pay anything to get them installed, there's no monthly contracts. We still have to form, and we'll get the drop installed. Economic development, community assets, these are, and these are all things that we're trying to do to, we need to create Jamestown and make it a better place for live, work, and play. And then future ready infrastructure, I talked to a little bit already about having other services. That, that aren't going to be available right away, but we will only construct it so we can help. Coming up to the next slide, customer service drops. So the tricky part for the next step will be getting all the customer service. So getting the drop installed, which is that fiber from the pole to the building. So there's, all the, all the mainline fiber, all this spliced up, because we'll be all in the pole line. We'll need to come back, and we'll need to run the fibers from the pole to the house, down the house, and then eventually into the house, where you get the permits equipment for your Wi-Fi router and things like that. So we're going to do this in two phases. The first phase is to get the drop installed, so when somebody comes and signs up for service, we're going to get, we're going to get right out there and get the drop installed. Just because the drop is installed does not mean that we have all the permits equipment yet, or that the back hall and the interconnection to the substations is done. But we're going to do this in parallel to try to accelerate this, because we have a very high deadline if it's done. And we want to make sure everyone that wants service can get it in that time. So we're doing two phases, the drop will come out, after the drop is installed, and the network is ready for the, for them to take, for the customer to take service, we'll send them a note and say, hey, we're ready for, come install it in your house. Come back, come back to your portal, pick a date that you want to sign up for your service, and then we'll send someone out to go and actually activate that electronics and put it in your house. So that's generally where we're headed with that. We will probably have an announcement on some, a period of free internet at the beginning, during the grant period. So we're really trying to encourage people to take advantage of this, this grant. Because the more services that we get the drops installed, the lower the cost is, the lower the rate speed. So it's, get the word out, everyone start logging in, get your service drop installed. Even if you don't want to take internet today, get that drop installed, because you might want it tomorrow, and we'll see that, see where we're headed with this. General timeline, the following page, just a quick update on where we're headed. As a reminder, this whole grant has to be done by the end of next year, by December of twenty twenty-six. Extremely aggressive development project here, we're trying really hard to make it all happen. Again, those service drops are going to be the critical piece, we're going to come up right up to the wire, we're going to install things all the way up to the thirty-first of December. So make sure you get people to sign up early if you hear them talking about it. We're going to be launching the website pricing, ISP tariff, and the initial two, one or two approved ISPs. Hopefully that'll happen before Labor Day, so if your ears open for that, the announcement. And then after that, we'll be ramping it up, marketing in September, we'll do local billboards, there'll be an insert in the BPU mailing, mailing cycle, and a whole bunch of other things, so it's going to be pretty much everywhere, so hopefully no one will miss it. We are, we do have some beta testers that have signed up, we had a social media photo a few weeks ago, but get some beta testers to sign up. We just want to make sure that the, the system works well, and that it gets, you know, gets tested and get their feedback, so we can make improvements. So they will actually be getting service in the next couple of weeks, possibly by the end of the month. Pretty exciting timing there. But a lot of make-ready to do, and then the downtown will probably be in the spring. So that's, that's a quick fiber update.
That's very quick, and I can just, you said it.
I can stay after and go through with anybody that likes to more, it is a lot, it's been a very aggressive.
The drop's going to be installed by subcontractors, or are they going to be done by BPU employees?
We're working on both, because of the sheer amount of work, so the contractors can scale up very quickly. But we do want our team to be able to do that in the future, so at the end of twenty twenty-six, when we take ownership of the assets and we'll continue to install it, it'll be our team installing those, from that point forward, but during the next year or so, we're going to have both contractors in the future.
Will, will this get rid of those calls that people's going to hear as on Thursday night?
This won't, but another project we're working on with Mike Green is getting us closer to that guest.
So, yes, in two, three years?
Yeah.
People ask me, I just want to.
It is, it is on our list of things to do.
Alright.
So I also have a, a drop currently, like kinetic, can you reuse that, or do you have to do your own drop?
We have your own drop, yeah, our, our network is a XGS-PON network, it's distributed split, and it can go to two gigabits per second, so the metric wind stream system cannot do that, so the speeds are unaware of. So it'll be a separate thing.
Do you have listed on there that the grant period runs through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six? Is that basically stating that after that period, for those that aren't signed up, the costs will be more expensive?
Um, we're trying not to let that happen, so the more, the more people we have on the system, the more that we can recover the fixed costs of additional installs. So the goal is to build, but we want to get people installing this quickly as possible, because we have the resources right now to do it.
Who will we call, or where, or just, where will the people lie, who will we call?
Uh, next week hopefully, we'll give you all that data with the phone number and the website, I won't throw it out there now for people to look at it, it's not quite ready. Give me a couple more days. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be your website. There will be an icon, BPU website that will change probably next Monday night. And so just keep a lookout on the BPU website, you'll see a fiber icon here, you can click that, you know, it's the website. It'll be all electronics setups to start with, there is a phone line that you can call. We will be inserting it into our phone tree, so if you call BPU after about a week or so, you'll get that as an option, you'll press whatever fiber and go fiber line. And there's also email accounts that will be published, so they've got a phone, email, our customer servicing is getting up to speed, I think they're ready. But the most part of the BPU is not administering the internet service. So we're not the fir-, we're not really the primary point of contact, it's going to be the internet service providers who will provision that service. We're, we're the infrastructure providers, so we're kind of here building the, building the infrastructure, building the road. And then the private companies will come along and use that infrastructure, so. Our, in the beginning of this grant, we will have the website, it'll be straightforward, the website, once they get serviced, they'll have, they'll choose which internet service provider they like to build.
Can you own your own router?
You can, if you want.
Yeah, of course. Are you going to provide it?
We will provide both the, the fiber optic converter, the permits agreement, and the Wi-Fi router.
Is that a rental cost?
No. It's yours. Nothing included.
I can't wait to see it.
Yeah, there'll be.
We look forward to it.
So the cost is going to be, I'm looking at.
I think you'll be, I think you'll be happy.
I know.
Yeah, I think Jeff, to your point, as we get past the end of the grant period, it just adds costs to make connections, to make some, to add people, you know, for the next fifteen months, that's all reimbursed through the grant.
So get in early.
Awards, so get in early, and then the team, under Chris's leadership, and definitely the work of Ellen and Becky to get this ready to launch, is focused on a, a rate that is going to be the rate for years, not a rate that doubles or triples over time. And so I think a lot of time and effort has also been put into that to ensure that, you know, this is something that's known, there's not a lot of fine print, there's not a lot of gimmicks. It doesn't change, you don't have to call every six months. No promises on rates, because it's a very complicated process right now, but at least that's our intent. I don't know, Ellen, do you have anything to add with the?
We're excited, I mean, you've probably seen some of the social media, we've done a few little posts just to get people interested. But we'll have for billboards in September, we'll have for door hangers, if you're in the neighborhood, where we're actually doing the drop, so that you'll get more information. And we're going to really see, all of the media will have some advertising, and we hopefully will sign up early.
And remember, it's a BPU, so they trust us, and we have to be reliable and workable.
I want your sum of respect from you.
It's a great project, a lot of work's been put into it, and it's really a condensed timeframe, so everything's in motion right now, so pretty exciting. A few other items, if we have time. So we're into our budget development planning process for twenty twenty-six budgets. So that work is started already, the five divisions, we'll be working with our board members over the next three to four months into the end of the year, putting those together and communicating those. One of the items for our largest division, the electric division, we filed for a rate case with the Public Service Commission at the beginning of July. We updated that filing, I think, last week. And we are going through the back and forth with the Public Service Commission staff on questions they have related to the rate case. And so anticipated that that should hopefully conclude by the end of the year, but rates affect January first. But sometimes that process grabs a little bit, but that's the current timing on that, and the other divisions will keep you rotated related to budgeting. One item that will likely come in front of council in the next couple of months, we're working on a land lease agreement with Jamestown Public Schools and Board of Education. So the Harrison Street property, where the new fueling depot is going to be, also the fire and ice training facility's down there. We're looking to purchase that property from the school system and the city. But we really can't go through that sale process until likely May of next year, when they have to put a property sale on the public budget vote. At that point in time, we're not going to end it. So we're trying to lease that land until that point, or beyond that point if needed. But ultimately, that's a lease that involves Jamestown BPU, Jamestown Public Schools, City of Jamestown, and probably the talk book. And so we'll get copies out, we're doing, we're working through that with our board right now. I know the Board of Education is working on that in parallel. And then once the BPU board approves that, we'll get the city council for a year review and put the questions into the approval. Hopefully, equipment coming in, fuel depot constructed by the end of the year. We've been running the power plant July and August, so power prices have been high, hot weather. And so again, that's off-system sales that brings in money from outside of our electric territory. It helps to, one, provide for the operating budget, but also create funds for the overhaul reserve fund and the disneying fund. So important work this power plant's been doing, appreciate that. Thanks everybody for your patience with Brooklyn Square the last few weeks, so a major district heating, main replacement project on there. Alex Pickett and his entire team, that was really a major project, installed and piping, and we have the project funded, and probably that pays. And so we still have work on either side of that, in the sidewalk areas, and we've got some work down Harrison Street a little bit further. So I don't know if that's going to be this Saturday or following Saturday, but more work with that wrapping up, I appreciate everybody's involvement and support on that. It's, I think it's every division of BPU is involved, so the water department under Eric Sallis' leadership, Jim Tarnanian Engineering, the wastewater team under Jim Alexander, but even the power plant, the T and D Department about relocating electric ducts, wind stream was impacted, they were down there, they were active. City BTW, a lot of city representatives, councilmen, thank you for stopping by, just to check on that and others. But, you know, a lot of interest in that project, it was really significant, and, you know, I think returning the form of, I mean, even past that. Ellicott, Town of Ellicott Water Main Extension Project, they look like they're going forward to run water west of Savannah Avenue, past the city line. So you may hear more of that in the coming months. But we've been working with them, their engineering team, they're trying to finalize the funding and how this is all going to work. But it, it may be the case where there's construction next summer, and moving that towards the, the town lining road, and I think a little ways up Strunk Road. Also some preliminary conversations with the Town of Ellery, and good luck to Venus Point. Just if there's any desire to, at some point in time, extend water in that direction, then the Ellicott project needs to be designed accordingly. Some of the asset capacity, should the project ever be wanted beyond the end of the Town of Ellicott. And maybe cents for St. Susan's fundraiser, so I think that got announced, but do you remember the number off the top of your head? Thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-two cents, so a record, record raise for St. Susan's. And appreciate exactly all the work you do and the team, but, you know, that's a tremendous amount of money to support a really important part of our community, so. Any questions for me on any of that, or other items?
Spending the water on the west side of the lake, any talk, any discussion going from Old Sees or Sunrise, Cove all the way up to Stone?
Yeah, for sure, but, you know, just to be honest, that's been discussed for many years. And it seems to start sometimes and then slows, so they've taken a number of different looks at that. But yes, I think that there is a serious desire to get water through the Town of North Harmony and to and into the Town of Chautauqua. Maybe up to the point where the Chautauqua City District already provides. But, you know, I, I think it's not dependent on us, it's, you know, I, I think that the, you know, the county has been involved in trying to help the towns, and there is a MAP plan and report that I think is soon to be available. And, you know, maybe you'll hear something in the coming months, but I'm not sure, appreciate it.
Yeah, now, now the PUC board has approved their prospective rate hikes in the next three years, is that correct, or, or National Grid?
Oh, National Grid, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I haven't followed the details of their rate base.
But does that have an effect on rate tiers of BPU?
Should make them more thankful.
Another reason to come to Chicago.
It's a, it's a difficult time for electric rate tiers across the state, because there's a lot of change, right, that's occurring. And, you know, partly industrial utilities like National Grid, you know, they're being expected to do a lot, both with where the state energy plan and the state direction is, but also in their infrastructure. And so, I mean, you do see a lot of the industrial utilities seeking fairly significant rate adjustments. And it's a, it's a really detailed and difficult process to go through with the Public Service Commission. And, you know, obviously, they got to the end of that process and got a, a sequence twenty percent rate increase approved. That's just one of many things where I think electric rates are a bit under siege in the coming years. And we work really hard to try to manage that ourselves for our customers. What else?
Do you know your successor?
I do not know.
You should stay three, four more years.
I do know that the, the processes is, is ongoing. And our board members are leading that process with the support of BPU staff, Andy Anderson is helping board members. And I think that that process right now is on schedule. But we're hoping to be able to name a successor in the, in the next couple of months, and have a period of transition. So that we can continue, you know, stability from a, from a management oversight and project standpoint. Yeah, the board members have been, I think, really good on top of that process, and really proactive in, in trying to manage it. Anything else?
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, the updates.
Yeah. Thank you, good presentation.
It's always good to be around.
It's always good to be around.
That's the part, that's my favorite.
All right, you ready? We will go on. We'll start with housing. Joe, what do you got for us?
Nothing.
Nothing, good.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. We, uh...
Just a paraphrase.
We did, we did have things to discuss. We had citizen Joe Paterini talk about a house in Highland and Palmer that got a huge haircut. Said to say it shows a lot of the deterioration of the building in the house. And Crystal's department is working on historic preservation to convince the state level that that house, you know, is unique in its own design and architecture. It's beyond salvage in many of our opinions. We also talked about the church that's been left to rent between Palmer and Front across from Lincoln School. There's been some issues on who should control the parking lot in address and exits and in, you know, coming and going. Is it a business? Is it, is it just a collection for enough? We don't know the circumstances yet, but there again, Department of Development will get Larry Squeez out to look into that. Map changes were presented. You've got a larger sample here at the full meeting showing the zoning changes recommending in that area in the northwest corner of the city. And it's due to the responses from recent complaints. So that's originally what was proposed, has been amended, and you can all see the new map. We talked about the opportunity to evolve, evolve and adapt in having this done now and not wait till the comprehensive plan and new zoning map and law or ordinance be, it could be a couple of years away. Someone asked about the keg room project. And Crystal said there's plenty of opportunities that are coming, maybe some extra funding for that particular project. But the Empire State Development Group is coming Thursday, I think you said. And she, I didn't write them all down, but there's probably six or seven different parcels and businesses that will fall into a, maybe a walking tour for those folks from ESD to give their expertise. We talked again, I just came in, that Fulton Street, you know, between Aitken and Strong has had ongoing issues. The Parks Department did apparently clear some debris and made it a little more visible for folks to see illegal people, trespassers, private, whoever. And create media, an issue where they can be reported more often. And demolition is on the way for that block. I don't know, four houses, three? I can't remember what you said.
I think it's four.
Okay. And then lastly, we talked about the pilot program that's coming forth for residential districts. And so the CFA application has been approved. And apparently, there's some money to bring up some of these infill properties to investment-grade parcels where they can be purchased by developers. One thing that was noted under that new pilot program is that it gives the planning commission quite a bit of flexibility in how all those potential developers need to follow and go forward. And then we talked about the tax foreclosure sale that's currently going on by the county. There's a bunch of city parcels that are up for auction. And you can go out to the County Real Property Tax site and look at the property. I think Auction International, I think, is the group that's handling the, the auction. So if I missed anything, please let me know. Regina? And I want to, for the record, thank Regina for running the committee for me two weeks ago. I was out of time.
You abandoned me, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Move on to finance part.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a number of resolutions. The first is Officer Daniel Torres, the Department of Public Officer Physical Building and Fitness Testing Training. It'd be held at the County Department of Learning and Training Center in Long Island, June sixteen, twenty eighteen. And then involve hugging, mail, gas, smoke for paid, four by, Jamestown Public School. Approved. Next, the resolution, Deputy Chief Scott Forster, GIV coordinator Sydney Robinson, time analyst, public cast. And one additional officer, the, here applies to the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, Public Safety Symposium. It's also the National District of Learning and Training in Long Island, New York. From September sixteen, June eighteen, and the expenses paid by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services. Approved. Next, Officer Mark Lushon Jr., P.E., acting director of Public Works. Has authorized your training of the United County College of Work Training School, will be held in Lake Forest, New York. Be held like from the sixth to the eighth. Expenses paid for someone to accept a seven seventy of gentleman's law. Approved. And next, Mayor and Secretary Jennifer E., acting director of Public Works. Are authorized and directed to purchase from the Streets Division for the VPW. Source file contract, payment combination of insurance check amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars and fifty-six cents and balance of forty-eight thousand and two cents. Pay from the New York State Department of Chips funding for new twenty-twenty-six, one forty SD plus. Then a dump truck to replace VPW truck, year seventy-two, that will, all number was totaled by insurance company. For a total amount not to exceed two hundred and three thousand, twenty-five dollars and no cents. That was approved. Resolved with the mayor's authorized executive agreement with Genesee Valley Construction LLC in Portageville, New York. Procured in place, storm cell, various location, they were the lowest of the bidder bidders. One bidder was actually about three times the amount. A total bid amount of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and no cents. And this was a budget that I... Approved. Next, resolved by City Council, Charles, is authorized to make the following minimum, twenty-five dollars, one budget. For purchase of covering funds toward the replacement of the burn in the paint water line for total not to exceed ten thousand dollars and no cents. Increase preparations from the Parks Department, uh, we would send one on zero, two, zero, two, excuse me, zero, two, zero, sorry. Ten thousand, decrease preparations from Contingency. With ten thousand dollars, we haven't spent much at all for Contingency, which is a necessary replacement here. So that was approved. And the next two items were all the fleet maintenance building and ventilation. The mayor's authorized its agreement, all from Schaefer Electric Corporation in Jamestown. Not to exceed twenty thousand, four hundred, twenty-five dollars and no cents for hemorrhage and local work there. That was approved. And also, the mayor's authorized, excuse me, for JMI Heating and Air, also Jamestown, not to exceed forty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and no cents. Hemorrhage, defund and install the fleet maintenance building. Both of these are coming from the twenty-twenty-three band that was used on the fleet maintenance building, which I'm one of the one that. Congratulations on ventilation problems with carbon dioxide, so we'll get that covered. They were both approved. We're going to have a report from the Councilor that I suck a quarter's sales tax, is it? Two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, which is approximately thirteen thousand below the projection. But combined with the first quarter, we are about fifty thousand over the first two quarters. That's good news. Councilor scheduled budget meeting for the four pets. Let's start this morning. That's all I have.
I have a question, just about to install the ventilation on the fleet building initially.
Uh, it would have been Jamestown Heating and Air, same company that's going to be putting in this ventilation.
So they did it.
They did, yeah, they, everything that they installed was to spec, there's no issue. It's just that the ventilation that's in there cannot move enough air to clear the fumes.
So it was a spec rate then?
Right. It was that spec.
Why, I didn't get it, because it sucks.
All right, I may know, we'll move on to some other...
I set him up for that.
Thank you, Mr. President. First resolution, zoning code and zoning net changes. Mr. Champ did speak about that. You were going to talk during, you know, about the open session with his concern about the floodplain down there, which I think is... Miss Hurley did a wonderful job of explaining how the maps have been changed. So that passed. And then the second one, our second resolution was for, also on the finance agenda, was for Officer Daniel Torres to attend the physical ability and fitness testing training September sixteenth through the eighteenth. And that passed. The third resolution was for, also on finance, for Deputy Chief Scott Forster, Sydney Robinson, Ali Kada, one additional officer, soft areas to attend State Division of Criminal Justice Services, Public Safety Symposium from September fifteenth through the eighteenth. And that's going to be paid for by DCJS in Pauline, New York. And that passed. Number four was, we tabled that for more discussion than full session, which obviously we had. I don't know if it was four or five, Joe, that you had, because we tabled both four and five on ours. I think Joe had some questions or some concerns and wanted to table. Do you want to raise it or not, Joe?
Well, basically, um, let me fix that point here. Yeah, with the, with the way the zoning is, I think, more or less, we just talked about pulling off on the decision until we get a little more information on where we're going and, and the flexibility of, of what we're talking about in general. Can't really... I could add much to that.
Turp into that heck of a play. I was, we didn't have, with Doug's discussion with the floodplains and maps and all the questions that may be arised out of the different zone districts, was that are we in a position to do this negative declaration on secret? And how did the LWRP affect it? But I think what, what we wanted to do was get some more feedback from the planning commission, whose meeting this week, I guess.
Tomorrow.
Right.
And so that's kind of how we, we thought we'd let it get back to us by voting session after we have any questions that might surface from the planning com... You addressed all the issues that we had talked about, but we, we, we hadn't heard you say that until the full session.
Right.
Okay. Are there any lingering questions that you have?
I, I don't have any.
I mean, the process for a, an LWRP consistency review is, it's mandated. It's a code. So, I mean, that has to happen and FEMA regulates the flood mapping. So there's not really a choice in any of that?
And then planning...
Those maps are available if anyone wants to see those.
Yep, we have the old ones, which are all paper and for a very long time, that's what we had to use, but it's all online now.
And we can access that through the city website, correct? As you said earlier?
I don't know if we have a link on our website, although we could probably put one up. But if you just look, if you Google FEMA floodplain map, it will bring up their website, which is what we would use.
You need to, you need to spell in a specific communication for that to happen. In other words, you've got to identify the street and the location.
Yeah.
Of the rookie.
Yeah.
It's not a universal city thing.
Yeah, that's why...
It's a GIS-based mapping tool. And so you, you identify the location that you're looking at. But it's very interactive and user-friendly.
I think the same could be said for number five. And, yeah, we did feel that we had all the information during our committee. Now that we've had discussions during full session, we're a little bit more understanding about it. And I think we're all, I don't know if we want to open up a vote, but, you know, certainly, we can have the information from tomorrow that's being added to any correspondence, and we can approve it in the voting session.
Sure. I, I know, Mr. Grant, maybe you wanted to put them at me, if we can do that. So four and five, those were tabled. And then for informational reports, we had a block party application on Stone Street from Second Street to Fulton Street on August thirtieth to the rain date of September sixth. The time on here was ten AM until eleven PM. This is an annual block party, and we discussed last year that we had cut the time back to an earlier time. We felt that eleven was, was too late, and we did the same this year. It's amended to seven-thirty PM rather than eleven PM. So that amendment was made and passed. There's a second block party, Halle Street from Royal Avenue and Fairmount Avenue on August thirty-first. That's just for an hour and a half, eight PM until nine-thirty PM, and that passed. The next one was a special event, second annual back-to-school Friday, or back-to-school field day to be held on Saturday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, at Jackson Taylor Park, from nine AM until six PM, including setup and teardown. That special event passed. The next one was a special event for the annual Dan, Daniel Feather Memorial Five Day, be held on Sunday, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, from eight-thirty AM until eleven-thirty AM, including setup, teardown. And that passed. And then Mr. Paterini, we had some discussion about a block party slash wedding that's going to take place on, in October on Pine Street. Some, it was on our agenda a couple of meetings ago. There were some concerns about open consumption of alcohol on the street. Mr. Pat, or Paterini spoke to the crew, who has assured us that, that there's alcohol there, it's going to be in a private building. There's also going to be security there and actually, I believe, some EMTs or EMS workers. There might be some skateboarding and stuff going on down there. So it sounds like that was, is going to be covered well, so we were happy to hear that, so. And then there was also a brief discussion that I brought up, and Mr. DeBerkson, I'll touch on it, I'll remind him. I, I had had a conversation with him about it. I got a phone call the other day from a county legislator, Phil Landy. I think he brought this up in a meeting here one time before. Mr. Landy would like to see a crosswalk up at Jefferson School from the Bradmar side over to the school. There is a large number of kids that reside at Bradmar. His concern are that there is not a crosswalk there for these kids. I know there's not a sidewalk on that side of Bradmar. There was a discussion, have a, could we possibly put a pad or something on that Bradmar's side? So the kids would have an area where they could cross from Bradmar over to school at Jefferson. So I had had a conversation... So, and I had had a conversation, uh, with Mr. Devers about that. I think he might talk about it a little bit tonight, so. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Randy?
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We, um, uh, we had, did have one person from the public that, uh, did have a concern. Doug's filmer spoke about, uh, that turning lane down at, headed south on South Main, where you go into, uh, C V S parking lot is, is a little, uh, it comes up quick, and it's a little bit of a rough go, turning left there. And I think Mr. Paternini spoke about this several months back also, but, um, we, and he said he, he, a constituent friend of his was concerned about, um, not being properly marked enough and not being safe enough. So we did discuss that. And, uh, Mark is informed us that, uh, that they are, um, looking into, into addressing, um, the way the lanes are configured down there. So it is in the making, uh, to possibly and probably change that in the future. So, um, we did have six resolutions, all that were covered in finance. And, um, Brent did cover all of those. The, uh, uh, the, the piping that would come for ninety-eight thousand, uh, in nine fifty is all that slip form that they interject into the rusted-out, uh, galvanized piping. And it's all in various, uh, different streets. And they did get, um, they did get a, a lot of bids for it, and they actually did well with the bidding, and it didn't cost as much from the original plan, from the original contractor, who decided to back out of his, uh, obligation. So that worked out well for us, and that comes out of, uh, capital funds. And, and of course, the, uh, the new, uh, ten-wheeler dump truck, which had a real frame problem and almost flipped over or did flip, but anyways, so they did get an insurance check, like Brent said, and we have to come up with, uh, forty-eight thousand for the remainder. And then Mark is going to, uh, to a Nikon Public Works Training School that was talked about. And the vents and the fans were talked about earlier, down to the, uh, maintenance garage on Washington Street. Like we said, it looks like they're going to have to be upgraded to, uh, get more of a, a C F I or whatever they call it, more ventilation, they're going to have to upgrade it. You don't have a choice. It, it would be unsafe and unhealthy to the employees to be breathing the diesel fumes in there.
Is it a violation of OSHA, related to it?
Gee. What do you think?
If you call them, it would be...
Yeah. Should I not brought that up?
I wouldn't call them.
Yeah. Well, we're going to do something about it right away, so that's the great news. Yeah. Yeah. It looks like it's going to have to have way more volume, uh, with the automatic vents that open and fans that, uh, push it up. So at least we're going to address it. The, uh, other issues that we talked about is the guide rail is, is in for the Purcell School. And the school is paying for the guide rail itself. And the county is going to install it.
What was the cost that the school is picking up?
Uh, it's roughly eleven thousand, all, all told. The county's helping us install the guide rail itself, so that's, and they're not going to charge. Um, so that's saving quite a bit of money.
But you're saying the dollar amount that the school is, is paying for is eleven thousand?
Yeah, off the top of my head, it's about eleven thousand.
Okay.
Then that is on schedule to, uh, be done before school starts.
Yes. The sidewalk is all done.
Right.
Um, the guide rails will hopefully be installed this week.
Yeah. I did see that the sidewalk got done. Uh, the, uh, we did discuss that there was vandalism at the splash pad at Jackson Taylor Park, and that is remedied and up and running. And back to, uh, Mr. Russell's concern about the crosswalk, uh, from Jefferson School to Bradmar. Uh, we are, that, that's a county road, which is not that, uh, big a thing. It doesn't mean we can't put a crosswalk there. But they'll just have to be notified of what our intentions are. And, and it is possible, probably, we talked, uh, in committee about if they have to, uh, possibly, it, it, it goes to grass on the other side of Bradmar Village. So if that was to get a little muddy or in bad shape, it is possible to put, uh, cement pad down, and Mark is going to evaluate this, uh, I guess, pronto. Going to go up and check that out, and if needed, ask the county, uh, for permission to, to do something up there. Other than that, all of, uh, the six resolutions were approved, and, um, and that's all we have.
Thank you. All right, I don't have a mayor to report, so we do have three, is it three?
Just four, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so four, six, it's up high.
But all under potential litigation?
Uh, not even potential litigation.
Okay.
I don't know, we're, we're in it.
All right. I have a motion to go under executive session.
Oh, gee, Jackson.